So I'd like to call the planning board.
I can do a good one.
Offer you the orders. Uh, first order of business is actually road calls determining form. So Mike, I want you to even start.
Mike, Ben.
Ron Stevens.
Doug Buchanan.
Josh Presley.
Fred Rogers.
Alright, we have a forum tonight, so we can go ahead and proceed. Alright, so I'll have to do first, basically go over what this board is. It is an advisory board to the town council itself. So we actually look at the different aspects, items that come for us, in relationship with the land use ordinance. And we also try to be very conscious of the property owner's rights, the adjacent property owner's rights, and how it relates back to the land use ordinance. Excuse me, I just got me on drugs, talking some. But, uh, this board, yeah, I'm happy to see everybody here tonight. Really, really happy. I'd love to see this many people I've ever been. To us, your opinion counts, we want to hear from them. Everybody on this board is passionate about Fairview, and the direction of Fairview is going to be going in the future. So, that's why we're here, so. Trust me, uh, this is actually a good board. We have some very, very good conversations from time to time. So, with that, the item of business, not the primary why everybody's here, is to discuss the L1CUD 24002, request from Hager Farms LLC, rezone a 38 acre tract, parcel number 08222011M to light industrial. CUD, conditional use district. Any use in the district will be required to obtain special use permit. So this actually just rezones it, the property. In the future, any development on that property will have to go back through this process again to get a special use permit. The special use permit actually has more requirements than what a rezoning will have. Any questions? Yes?
Let me, let me go over, let me just, let, let me go over first, and then we can, we can.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you a question about what I just said.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Am I happy?
You want me to go over?
Yeah, so Mr. Humphrey, if you will, go ahead and, um, see, talk about this.
For those who don't know me, I'm Ed Humphrey, I'm the land use administrator. Don't think I need this, but other people might. The request tonight is from the Hager family, Hager Farms LLC, to, to rezone this piece of property right here. This is 218 Red Hager. This 38 acre tract to light industrial, conditional use permit. What that means is, like Doug said, this is a, a rezoning to say to somebody, whoever would like to lease it, that the industrial uses are permitted in this particular area. But only with a conditional use permit, I mean, not special use permit. And he said the special use permit now comes through, through the town units. So it can be subdivided into smaller tracts, or could be, if somebody asks. To my knowledge, there's nobody knocking at Mr. Hager's door to lease the property. Special use permit, the conditions are, this is RA40, it will be now if approved, L1CUD. Uh, can you read my black? There was a, there's conditions, and, uh, the conditions are, that all properties are approved, will be required to install a 30 foot buffer, as required by the ordinance. This buffer will be whatever, if this is adjacent to a different zone, so. If this is rezoned, this will be RA40, this will be RA40, this is RA40, and this is RA40. So there will be a buffer along here as the property develops. Not the whole property one time, doesn't need to be. It may remain currently, we don't know. We have not, excuse me. The Hager Farms has not done any pre-looking at the property to see if it perks. Perking mean, is there aesthetic available to a use? There's no public sewer. One of the requirements is public water, however, to come this way. We are trying to get everybody that we can on county water due to, due to availability and arsenic in the water. So that will be required. We'll also check with NC DOT. NC DOT maintains that road, Red Hager. If a use is intense enough, NC DOT may require that road to be changed in some way. Repaved, widened, whatever, but they control that, I do not, believe in that. And then, along with some light, I said, all properties, uh, all properties will be leased. So that, those are the conditions today. I will now talk to the board about, if you'll turn to number two in your, in your packets, pretty much tells you what I just told the audience about the application itself. Page three, four, and five is the application. Page six is what a narrative, if you will, from, uh, Mr. Hager, which I asked everybody to provide, and then the narrative, and he has requested that I read it to you for the public. Dear Mr. Humphrey's planning board and town council, my wife Jane and I are requesting to be zoning the parcel 08222011M to light industrial. We own several other adjoining, adjoining properties that are also zoned light industrial. These properties here are also light industrial. Uh, two automotive shops and one of them propane, propane, which is right here. And the automotive shops are, are right here. In the past year or two, we've received multiple phone calls inquiring about additional land zones for L1 use. Our purpose in the rezoning request is to prepare for future growth, and we believe this parcel would be best suited for light industrial as opposed to residential. Such as businesses I mentioned, in the future, it would provide additional revenue and services for the tenant, his residents. There's no plan to sell the land, that's one of the conditions, and it would remain in the farming program until the IT use was approved by the, by the council. We're committed to adhering to all applicable town or fairview land use ordinance requirements, and will fully comply with the established regulations and guidelines. Respectfully, Mr. Hager. Number eight is a list of the property owners, well, most are here tonight, I think, within 500 feet of the requested rezoning. One of the conditional, uh, use requirements is to have a community meeting. And all that is, is to make sure the community is aware of what's happening around them, and that's within 500 feet of any part of the property. Well, I think that was about 17 people standing. Page nine is the property we're talking about. Page 10 is a, an example of how the buffers might look around property, which is required as the use changes. Number 11 says it is an A paint screen, and that details what has to be on that screen. Questions for me? We good?
Good.
Alright.
Do you want to say something?
Do you want to say anything? I'm sorry. So, uh, anyone, Hannah, would you like to speak with me?
Um, I can, I can address questions, or I can reiterate what he's already said.
Let's let you sit right there, and we'll direct questions to you.
Okay.
What I had told Doug that I would recommend to him is, there's no list that you sign in. If you have a comment, we would prefer three minutes, there's a lot of you, if all of you speak, we will be here to convert and talk. And I go to bed soon. If you want to make a comment, raise your hand and you'll be with us. If you'll come up here so you can be heard, we would appreciate it, thank you, never address. Okay?
Yes, sir, and I just wanted to reiterate, we don't have a time limit. We're not going home at seven o'clock. If you're still here wanting to talk and stuff, we're here, okay? Alright, so at this point in time, I'd like to go ahead and open the floor for public comment, questions? Yes?
Come on, can I tell you about this?
Yes, please, yes.
My name, my name's Dana Williams, and I actually live right across from where this was happened. And, um, like Ed said, nothing's really planned right now. And I just want to say that there is something, that the, the commercial businesses are down here. And we've got, we have a little bit more traffic along the road. But, you know, none, none of us want to see anything change, right? I mean, most of the time, we don't ever want to see change happen. But that's not really realistic anymore. Uh, it's gonna come, whether we like it or not, it's gonna come. And, you know, I support what Biggie's trying to do, because I would rather see, you know, some light business over in here versus a lot of houses. Because I think, you know, the people you got in a condensed area, the problems you're gonna have with a, with a commercial business, you're gonna be people coming in and out, in and out. But, they're not gonna be living there all the time, so I just want to say that, supporting what Biggie's trying to do. I'm gonna probably be impacted more than anyone else, but, like I said, i- i- it's not realistic, everything's not gonna change right away, they all. I mean, we can all say, go west a little bit, we can see everything coming, this will happen, and it's gonna happen. And hopefully, um, if a business does come, then it's gonna help support the tax revenue, uh, help do some other things for the community, you know, the park we have back over here, a great asset for Fairview. And, um, hopefully, whatever will end up here one day, it'll be the same. But if this is coming, so I'd have to say.
Anyone else?
Let me go ahead.
Yes, sir. Come on.
I'm Alan, alley 225, alley 218, West Monroe, that's a beautiful decent property here. Wow, I need to start. I'm gonna start, the last time we went through the zoning process and I spoke, uh, I was led to believe, and I'm not gonna say how, but I was led to believe that this piece was going to be barned, light industrial, I even spoke about it, farming community, we need farmers. I've got a propane tank right back garden, lit up, lifetime, it's not fun. On this road, I get no continual rest, as a matter of fact, that's why I'm speaking now, so I can go home and go to sleep. Uh, we've got several inadequate fellows that need to race back and forth to work for some reason, up and down the road. Any more traffic here is just not acceptable. Nice piece of land, maybe move it further back, maybe move it behind where we've already got the light industrial. This piece of property, ideal, cut your road through here, anywhere you'd like to cut, how about coming down this road, cutting it in, this is built better for it. I got runoff coming already in the back of my property, goes into my neighbor's property, much worse. Uh, I can't even imagine what this would be, paved regardless of what it is. Uh, so, don't want it now. We're gonna have development in Fairview, this needs to be, if anything, uh, homes, maybe shopping center one day, 20, 30 years. I understand the need, uh, to lease, recurring revenue, all that's good, but, uh, yeah, I'm vehemently opposed. And we'll do whatever I can and stuff. Thank you.
Let me, yes, sir, I'd like to, uh, extend what, uh, my brother-in-law Alan Daddy was talking about. My name is Keith Wade, I live next door to him, and, uh, my wife Jane Presley Daddy, Wade is. I, I think it's especially important for us to identify the, the boundaries impacting with the most profound way. Uh, we are, we're the most vulnerable in terms of whatever is here, we're gonna be right there because our backyard is, this is a lot. We, we're basically living back here because goodness knows, the front, the front field is off limits. It's like a no man's land with the amount of traffic that goes by on 218, it's a racetrack there. We just can't help it, it's progress. And I understand what Mr. Williams is saying, and I appreciate that, that progress is progress, we've got work within it. But I would love to have the aesthetic character of the neighborhood intact. I want to just adjust, address the, the problem of runoff, because we always have, we have an acre and a half pond right here. It basically comes over onto Alan's slice here, and ours, it's about an acre, acre and a half. It used to be about 10, 12 feet deep, but it's not because the elevation of this, uh, farming land is higher. And so you're naturally gonna get some silt runoff, like runoff into the Mississippi River, right, it's brown. And, uh, so we're, we're, we don't have a deep pond anymore, and that kind of makes it worse when we have heavy rains. It actually accelerates the amount of runoff coming into the pond, and therefore, off our road, off our property, and down into the field, and basically our, our driveway is pretty much needing repair pretty bad. Uh, this is all in the space of the last 15 years, okay, so a driveway lasts 30 years and you gotta repave it, but. Having said that, it, it's certainly accelerating, and I noticed about 10, 12 years ago when Brent Hager Road was changed from gravel to state road and they paved it, the runoff situation coming right through here, because there is a, a gully all the way along Brent Hager. But that doesn't really catch the water where it goes, it's running into our pond. And so our erosion problem has accelerated to the point where I've had to have about 12 tons of riprock going in, and we put in a $5,000, uh, corrugated steel pipe to, to try to get that water to the front field instead of just overflowing and ruining the driveway, et cetera. We're having erosion along this bank, it's pretty bad. My brother-in-law thinks it's, it's a, a bunch of hedgehogs or something, I said, no, that's wave action. When, when it's, when it's high tide, and you've got a lot of wind coming from the southwest, it's going to just erode. And so here we are with this problem of increased erosion, and imagine now, if we have, we pave off some of this and all the rooftops that are involved. Granted, if they were houses, you'd have plenty of rooftops, but at least you have lawns around them absorbing the water. The ability for this land here to absorb
You have three minutes.
Is, is, okay, and, and so, uh, I, I think it's just gonna get worse, but thank you.
Yes, sir. Come up, please.
My name's Greg Rushing, uh, I'm neighbor of Biggie's, uh, somewhere right about here, probably where I live. I want to say that, number one, uh, to address the man's concerns about, when you develop a piece of land nowadays, you can't just go out there and do what you want to. You have to have erosion control ponds, you have to have, uh, all kind of, uh, uh, you know, property borders with live plants and so on and so forth, so probably in the fact, if this land was developed, it would probably help your situation instead of hurt it. Uh, don't know that, I don't, I don't think your problem is. But I can tell by driving down the road that there's some deep gullies back in there behind your house. But, I want to say I'm in favor of this, and the reason being is that I know Biggie Hager, and he's not gonna do anything that's detrimental to this community. He's been here all his life. Uh, I just, for instance, the little garages that he's got over there now have been a god bless for me. I mean, uh, it's just so easy to go over there and, I could almost walk home if I wanted to, ladies, you know? But leave the car, the people take good care of you, call you when it's ready, you got this. Yeah, I don't have to drive to Monroe, or Mick Hill, or some other place to do this. So the point I'm trying to make is that if we had some little small businesses in this area, I think it'd be great for the community. Uh, keep us from having to drive an hour somewhere to get service, or get a product, or whatever. Uh, I, I've often said I wish that we would get a super nice something on the corner down there at Fairview to help with this, uh, you know, uh, maybe words competition I won't use. So that the, the place is there now, we have some competition, and, uh, but anyway, I'm not gonna run on. I think that if y'all approve this thing, I know that if they go by the rules and regulations, the grading will be done in accordance. And, but, you know, the adjacent landowners will be protected. You know, you just can't go do stuff like you did 50 years ago, you know?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm a pair of the Sarns, um,
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Pair of the Sarns, um, 7401 Concord Highway, this is my property right here, uh, family land is this. I'm concerned about the va- our property values, that this is business, and what we can do, and the trash that would come across on our property. My son walked our property line just this week and picked up loads of trash all around our property line. And I want to say also, a few years ago, we had our, our detached garage broken into, and we had the sheriff's office come out and, uh, did a report. And at that time, we found underneath our smaller building, that whoever broke into our property had put some automotive stuff underneath the little building. And, uh, like a week later, we saw two guys walking across from this direction over to our property, across the field. Late, uh, late in the afternoon, it was like in, in February, and it was dark, and they were all in dark clothing, had no flashlights or anything. And my son saw them, confronted them, and, uh, they told him they were out looking for a drone that they, that they lost. And it just, you know, I, I suspect it came from one of those businesses, some young kids, uh, but I don't know. I'm, I can accuse anybody of it, but I'm just concerned about stuff coming in from the community right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. In the back, yes?
My name is Edie Long, I'm part of El family land of a partner. I have read and reread the ordinances that presented in the, uh, community notice, and compared those elements with the conditional zoning district application. The purpose, permanent application does not appear to be complete. Also, I mailed the town clerk to see if there were any additional attachments, and there were none. I had gone to the community meeting to learn more about this request. I have now previewed the passing for the planning board, but I take issue with the report as presented from the community. Or just from the L1CUD 24002. This property is not next to the parcel 08222011F. There was no sign-up sheet, so there is not an accurate listing of all who attended the community meeting. The comment in the report that the property residents that spoke at the meeting were not in favor of rezoning is in error. There were many of us that came in and just asked questions, we only got, we don't know yet. There were comments presented about concerns that were already happening on the businesses on Brent Hager Road, which included noise, traffic, trans- trash, trespassing, on the, the trespassing on the adjacent properties. I believe that my questions had merit, and therefore, I'm presenting you a list of all my questions. And I respectfully ask that these people attach to your minutes for this meeting, and your answers with that. I want those minutes posted early, so all residents of Fairview can read them, and they can make their own decision as to whether this should be allowed, for y'all to approve it or not. I also ask that nothing be done until you can answer my questions.
Yes?
I just have some questions I'd like to ask. Come on to now, just across the, some, Chris Christmas, I'm related to the family, I'm live on the property about over here, and Lee and I look across the field, and we look at that property every morning, you know, we go out the front door. I heard some, I'm an engineer for 33 years, and business helped the factories get built and grow and expand. And I do light industrial and heavy industrial work. And I want to know what safeguards are there to keep me from walking out and seeing $30 million manufacturing facility go over there with trucks coming in and out day and night. Now, I heard us say it won't be sold, but what does that mean? Things always get sold. I have customers that are looking for a 35 acre, 38 acre tract to put a small manufacturing plant on, you know? As soon as that, we're, we use commercial and industrial kind of interchangeable here, but they're not the same thing. Industrial plants have trucks coming in and out 24/7, bringing in raw materials and taking out finished goods. I design tank farms and tanker truck loading and unloading facilities for these plants. So what's to keep, I, I have no problem, I understand what Hannah wants to build, I don't, can you share it in that with them?
That's just us, okay.
But, I don't think, th- these commercial businesses, at least Azron, the automotive shops down here, that's not industrial, they're all those repair jobs, okay? Now, I wouldn't have any problem with all this, but being a bunch of small little shops, commercially or whatever. But when you put that word industrial, it makes you a target. Fourth, the other question I got is, what's to keep a developer to come in here, buy the whole thing, cut it up into one acre parcels? And Hannah will be a rich woman if either one of those happen, she'll get a big check, and she won't be able to say no. Because a plant's got 40, 50 million dollars of financing to prove to build a facility, it's gonna give her 2 million, 3 million, whatever it takes to get a property. And that's fine, I'm doing an industrial project right now, in an industrial park in Indian Trail. And I don't want it here. We're having a heck of a time. The company owns 45 or 50 trucks, it's on a three acre tract, and they can't load them all. And they can't load them all at one time in the morning. They got kind of stagnant. It's a traffic problem, so. So, small, modern, not businesses, and the things that Tana told me she wants to do, I'm all for. But can we do it without calling it industrial, or is that going to make this a target? That's my only question. We talked about, so, so what is the prevention of going to make sure that it gets sold? My thoughts. So I want to ask.
Sure.
I'm Tana Hagler of Huntahay. I'm a haggard dog, youngest dog. Um, and my family will probably inherit this tract one day. But as we've mentioned, we don't want to sell it. My, my dad wants this to stay in our family. I want my children and my grandchildren to own that property. Um, initially, I had an idea. It's just still an idea. That's why there's no special use permit attached to this. Still have a lot of research and land work to do on that. Um, but in the meantime, since we need Blossman had contacted my dad in the past about leasing some property, we thought, why not go ahead, get it zoned for light industrial in case there's another company out there that's looking for land? Because we've had phone calls, people asking, well, we need more than just one or two acre tracts. So that was our thinking, and we met with Ed, I think it was early December, and had discussed it with him. And he, he thought it was okay to go ahead with the full tract. That's, that was my remembrance. So we, you know, we had discussed all that with him. We did go over the list of the land use, the table, the land use ordinances, and we found some that we knew right away we didn't want. Um, adult establishment, that's, you know, we don't want that. Because we have family there, and we hope to still have more family that's going to live over there. Uh, firing range was another, circus and fairs. That's, that's a no brainer. We don't want that. We're family oriented. Um, but the ones that we did see that we liked, um, automotive body shop, I think that may have been mentioned earlier, contractors' offices, you know, for electricians or plumbers, uh, that may be a need here. And again, those would be, we would lease the land, possibly build a building if we can swing that. But they would have, more than likely, those businesses, if they're going to lease the land, they would have to come in and do the comment. They wouldn't be in our family necessarily. So that, that was our thinking, um. I also wanted to mention, you know, I know Greg Rushman talked about my dad, so, who, those of you that don't know, he served on the town council in the past. He was instrumental in the development of the park. I don't know that, I mean, I know he did a lot of the land work for the park. That's, and I'm sure most of you know that. He's a, he and my mom are Fairview, you know, very active in Fairview and big supporters of the town, as am I. So, um, and I also wanted to mention the Town of Fairview website. It says, Town of Fairview, a wonderful place to raise a family and operate a business. So we're just asking for your support to help us lay a foundation for any potential businesses that might want to work, to operate in Fairview. We appreciate your time very much and your service to the town. Thank you, Ed and Teresa.
Anyone else?
Thanks, Slim. I'm Jackie Pressley Wade, and we, I live here on two eighteen, how about two eighteen? Um, I'm here to express my opposition to this thirty-eight acre, which being rezoned behind our home. Because as you can see, we have the biggest piece of residential property right up against it. So it is literally adjoining to our backyard where I, I spoke at length about that in the last meeting. Because we live in our backyard, because we, we play in our backyard. You can ritual and apron, because we just stay in our backyard. So it's going to change our whole way of, of life. But I'm going to read this, because otherwise I'll get off track. Um, we are the most vulnerable as far as what's adjacent, because that's our, that's attached to us. Um, however, it affects everybody in Fairview. As more and more light industrial is so, Fairview will start to look like other communities in Union County that are crowded, they've lost their rural atmosphere, their appeal, especially right here in the center of town. I think it'd feel better if it were not right here at the crossroads. Um, light industrial, as, as you were talking about, Tana, it could be anything. I mean, it could be a campsite or landfill. I mean, we can't know what it's going to be just because you say what you think you might do. So that's real scary for us. It should be everybody in here. Because it will spread. Once it's done, there'll be those light industrial coming up everywhere in Fairview. It'll never look the same. We've, uh, but according to that land use ordinance on the website, there are four things that have to be determined for the special use permit. And the first thing is it won't endanger public health or safety. Well, when you've lived since the sixties with a beautiful thirty-eight acre farm behind you, and all of a sudden you've got businesses back there and strangers and buildings, yeah, we're not going to feel safe anymore. We'll feel, um, anxious for sure. But it's also, um, not safe with all that traffic. We, we had, we have wrecks. I don't know if y'all know how many wrecks we have? We've had people die in front of our house and come through our woods and miss that curve and, and just more and more traffic can't be said. The second thing is it says it will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property. There's no way you start putting businesses and not devalue our property. Not everybody's, but for sure, these right here. So anybody that wants to move to the country and buy a nice home is going to, not going to buy our home because it's going to have a bunch of businesses behind it and maybe a great big fence. So it's changing everything. The third and fourth thing says it will be in harmony with that area and conforming with the land use plan. Well, when Mr. Hagler says that he's got adjoining parcels that are light industrial, and he's got property next to the Hagler building, none of that's next to it. There's nothing adjoining this. It's a state road. So these businesses aren't adjoining this. So I don't understand that. Because it's like he's just going to add on to his businesses, but he's actually going to start a whole new business development. So to me, those are four things right there that have to be met, and I don't see how you can do that. Um, you have to abide by these conditions, as I understand. You can't just say it's adjoining, it's across the road, but anyway. So I want to know if there's been an impact analysis done on these issues, and if there has, I would like a copy.
There has not.
Well, I think we're going to have to do that. Um, I hope and pray that you'll determine this shouldn't be rezoned to light industrial. I encourage you to drive down Brent Hagler Road and see, see it for yourself, see where our property is, what it's going to do to us. Because we're definitely going to be affected very negatively. And you have to understand, it might be your backyard next time. If you don't have that situation, then you're a very fortunate. But right now, after almost sixty years, our whole standard there is going to change. So it's really devastating to us, and I'd just like you to look at it and think about it. Would you, would you want that? Would you?
Would anybody else like to speak?
I'm sorry, I just kind of want to speak, but.
What, what's that again?
What's this one? This two eighteen?
No.
Sir, if you'll, if you'll speak into the mic, tell us your name and where you live.
James Antio. I live at, uh, one ten Old Dutch Hill West, near the corner there. I was just wondering where this is at.
Brent Hagler Road.
Brent Hagler.
Off of two eighteen.
Off of two eighteen.
What was it?
Two eighteen.
Okay, two. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else like to address the board?
I have just a brief comment if I might.
Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Lee Hagler, Yance, and I live, um, right here. And, um, anyway, I grew up here, planned to live here for most of my life, of course, as well as my family. My daughter wants to build here, and obviously, my parents live here. There isn't nothing that my family would ever do to negatively impact Fairview. I mean, we've lived here over a hundred years, the Hagler family. This is our home. This is what we want to build. The ideas that have been considered are in every way positively impactful for Fairview. We don't want anything dirty, smelling, dangerous. Because we're going to live here closer than most of you. And, um, anyway, we only have positive things in mind, and that would be the direction we're going in. Again, what the, the things that might be considered would be to benefit the people that live here now. We're not wanting to build a bunch of houses and have a whole bunch more people come into Fairview. We've got enough, but let's service our friends and family and community better as these businesses already have. So that's our goal only, is to serve Fairview.
Board's open, guys? Any last questions? I speak. Go ahead. Come on up.
My name is Daniel Medlin. Um, I actually run one of the mechanic shops that's right here on Brent Hagler Road. Mine is Medlin Automotive. My brother-in-law's sitting back there running the diesel shop. Here's the diesel. Um, one thing I would like to say is the stuff that B.B.'s trying to do is just going to impact the community. I mean, if he goes into this business, it's here, it's going to prevent houses being built, which is going to be more people on your back door. If they have to put a buffer up, that's going to be trees. It's going to be a burn with trees on it. It's going to be a wall. It's going to be something to prevent everything from being in your back door. So that's going to prevent people coming over and stuff like that. Now, as far as the mechanic shop side, Mr. B.B. has been nothing but phenomenal for us. I mean, he lets us rent the place from him, run a business the way we want to, under certain stipulations for him. If there's an issue, he comes and addresses us, lets us know what we need to do to fit certain things to make sure that it's pleasing to the customers and the community. Um, there was something mentioned about the vehicle being parked in the ditch. We went this week, moved everything off the road, so that way everything was just right for the community. Um, but for what he's going to do, I mean, I don't see any problem in it. Like Mr. Dana said, it's a growing community. You can go down the road, you can go to Unionville, off of Unionville, Reef Road, there's a new storage facility coming up over there. I mean, it's happening everywhere. So for what he's going to do, he's going to bring tax revenue, he's going to bring more stuff to the community. You're not going to be able to just have to drive all the way to Monroe or wherever to get stuff done. You're going to be right here in your back door. I mean, it's going to be simple things. It's not going to be anything huge. It's going to be beneficial to all of us in the community ourselves.
Yes, sir. Come on up.
My name is Laurel Price. I live on two eighteen. And, uh, talk about traffic. It's an interstate. B.B. Hagler, I have known for many, many years. In fact, I'm an invite to Fairview. I'm originally raised in Kenya Trail, and we played basketball together, along with B.B. and a lot of others around here. And I don't think we ever beat them. I've got a roach in the back there. Their, uh, scorekeeper, the score was ten to nothing before we ever started. But, uh, I'd like to say one thing that I've known, I've moved here when I come out of the army in sixty-two, and I've lived here ever since, I got no desire to go anywhere else. I've known the Hagler family for many years now, probably ten or better. But, uh, they are community people. If he thought he was doing anything to hurt Fairview, I'm sure he wouldn't be doing this. And I'm not, like I say, I've known his family for, ever since I've lived here. And I've never known to do anything to hurt or harm Fairview. In fact, his family was probably, and I'm sure he was, uh, instigated in building the first unit in the nation of Fairview, right? And, uh, the park, he worked diligently in that park done. And I think he's just a, he's an asset to Fairview community. And what he's going to do, I don't think is going to hurt nobody. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just had a couple of questions. James Antio, uh, lived down Old Dutch for eight years now. Not too long. Most of y'all have been here a lot longer than me, but appreciate it. I just wondered, the Midland that was up there, is that your kid? The Midland?
This one?
Is that your kid here? I guess a lot of people spend their life savings, especially nowadays, literally spend their life savings on purchasing homes out, voted for in the country. And when the city comes to them north, um, normally, but you can see why they were, they were quite back a little bit. Because they moved out of the city to come to the country, you know, the city's coming to them, and they spent everything they had to do them. So just keep that in mind when you're passing ordinances. And I was just like, y'all, y'all voted these people in. How many people are against it? Can we show, show hands?
Uh, no, sir.
No?
No. Now, this is where you're to comment, ask questions.
Okay. All right, that's by all I had to say. Keep, keep us in mind when y'all vote that this is what we came to do as the.
We will. Anybody else? Okay, and with that, I do not see anybody that wants to speak at this point in time, so we will be closing the public comment session. So, all right. So that gives us a chance to chat a little bit up here on the board. And you guys will stay, please, okay? This is not a closed session. Uh, Mr. Medlin, let's start with you.
I don't really see a big problem, I don't think. Because I've set up my degree for a long time, engineer. And, um, I really don't think that trying to do anything would hurt Tana or help it. I can understand where adjacent owners might be against it, but, uh, each individual thing will have to be approved, and there'll have to be a, a, you know, some type of fence or shrubs or trees or something to, uh, coverage. This is only.
Well, my initial concerns were the precedent that you set by changing the zoning. But, uh, Mr. Medlin said that, uh, we would examine the use of the individual businesses that are coming here. That wish to come in here on a case-by-case basis, and they would have to satisfy the requirements of the land use ordinance, et cetera. And would have to gain approval of the, uh, planning board to get our recommendation. And then move on to the council, and then go on through the process, so, um. Part of the stream of consciousness has been very long. So part of the stream of consciousness, it's been a very long day. I also, while I appreciate what the Hager family has said about they have no intentions of selling, they have no intention of doing anything that could potentially harm the town, the citizens of Fairview. You know, once you change zoning, it's, the cat's out of the bag. And what's to say that folks, years from now, might have a different take on it? So it's not really easy question for me, so.
I agree with that, and I also think that we need to make sure that these questions have been asked before we make a decision. You agree? Okay. I don't know if anybody knows that I'm actually a civil engineer, gradually not considering that, and had to work and try to get a, the stormwater and erosion control approved for a project, DEQ, DWQ. It is a horrendous process now. The attitude is no silt leaves the property, no additional stormwater. Any stormwater that leaves the property has to be purified, in other words, removed the contaminants. So this is actually quite difficult sometimes, so, and it takes a lot of work. And this is one of the things, the, you know, if you want to say the little apple cart here, that I'd like to see is that we make sure that the property is not subdivided into small units that would not be subject to the requirements of the stormwater, so, okay? We don't deal with NC DOT. I've had to deal with them, and it's difficult too, to be honest with you. It is a, a long chore, and they can look at everything. They look at something that most people don't even realize, is site distance. They come up with a new ordinance on that, that your site distance is based upon speed, so, and the side triangle goes to the setback. And nothing can, supposed to be grown in that side triangle. Now, we all see that, and stuff, but, you know, states under manned, and it's very difficult for them to try and get everything done. So it is state road, so they're the ones gonna have to really say yay, nay whatsoever. It's, we don't have the power to say, you can't go down this, step down the street. If it's an illegal vehicle, then the shared department needs to do that, and so, that happens a lot, so, okay? But this is an advisory board, so. And this is actually not a special use permit. So I'll just glance through the questions, and a lot of the question stuff would be addressed in a special use permit, not into a rezoning, so. So it's a two-part process, and it's not short. I just did a rezon, no, a special use permit for the Shrine Club in Union County. Six months to get the drawings approved. And then once it's approved, I had to do more stuff, it's just, it's, it's, you know, it's a lot of work, so. People wanna know why it can't be done in thirty days. No, believe it or not, when you do it commercially, it's at least a year to get all the permits, so. And I keep going back, what is our chore tonight? And that is to look at the rezoning, not how the property's gonna be used. There are certain items in there that, yeah, it just doesn't make sense to put it here. And that would be part of a special use permit, so, okay? So, and I also agree, and I've said this to my wife for thirty years now, change, change is gonna happen. And what we need to do is we need to control that change. We don't want something haphazardly going on. But at the same time, we gotta be conscious of the property owner's rights, and also the adjacent property owner's rights. And be able to minimize the harm to each as it relates back to the land use ordinance. Talking too much, it's, so. Based upon the discussions, does anybody on the board have any questions? I will say that I was very surprised with a two-page list of questions tonight. Just glancing through it, because I don't have time to read, look at it, and study it. What I saw, most of it related back to a special use permit and the process. So I need to rely upon Mr. Humphrey to make sure the process is done correctly, so. I think that it would probably be good to go ahead and answer the questions, but I don't think it's merit to say, no, we don't vote on this tonight. And so that's actually a topic discussion for the board.
I think my big question is, last question is, the permit application is incomplete, so how can you correct, implement it, cancel it?
Yeah, that's gotta be addressed.
What is, what, what do you think is not complete? Come to the mic, please.
The application itself said, down the back, required submitted. I didn't see any submissions. Pull up the application. Other required information attached the following. C, a sealed boundary survey was drawn to the practice of scale prepared by certified engineer by surveyor engineer in state and on ground. And it goes down showing dimensions of the property and adjacent lots and streets, and then you've got one, two, three, four. I just, I just want to know, I think everybody here just wants to know, wants to know that the application's complete, that questions have been answered, and that it is in accordance with our land use ordinance.
I'll answer that, that, that question on the survey. I do have a copy of that, I just didn't include it in the, in the package. We all know where the property is, so it's fairly obvious to me that detailed survey is fine, and I have that, but it's, doesn't really pertain to what you need to know. I do have it, we glad to provide it to you.
Number three, traffic, parking, circulation. Since the Hager doesn't know what's gonna be there, if it's gonna be five buildings, two buildings, one building, then it's, it's impossible to provide it. Landscape plan, same thing again. If you have, if the border itself, we know what that's gonna need to be. We have a buffer, and it's a type A, so there's so many trees, so many trucks, and it's actually listed in the land use ordinance for the type of trees and trucks, so. Down the interior of it, until we actually have a developed plan of what's gonna be there, you don't know what the landscape's gonna need to be, so. Plans and elevation of all those structures. There again, we don't know what the structure's gonna be. Is it gonna be a bowling alley, grocery store? And for some reason, everybody wants to put in dry cleaning, I don't know why. Mr. Humphrey said that he did have a survey of the property, and those actually usually indicate the floodline.
There is no floodline.
I did look up on the GIS site, this property is not in the floodline, with Union County GIS. Soil classification. There again, that's generally used for erosion control, and also it's called post-water retention basis. Existing photography, five-foot contours. We know the contour's gonna change, so. Plan for providing puddle and polluted water for the treatment of wastewater. Until they know what's gonna be there, if it's a storage facility, buildings, then the requirement for sewer is much less than would be for a grocery store, so to speak. So there again, that has to be determined based upon the actual use, and that's the kind of things we would look at for the special use permit, so. I guess the first word of business for the board is to go ahead and see if there's any more comments about the questions that was been presented to us tonight. So let me just sort of put together my thought that the questions will be answered and posted, but it is not something that should delay the decision of this board tonight. So that's open for discussion for the board? Any discussions?
Then you answer my question. Sorry, I had to answer my question.
Okay, cool.
I think as long as that we make sure that it's a way that goes.
You, you know me.
Yes, I do.
I find myself agreeing with you that we don't really, we can't really justify delaying the decision.
I think many more information as far as the impact.
Impact to the changes.
It's gonna be a big impact on our community, we need to think about it.
Yes, sir.
Well, you're right on the mid of it, it's gonna be a big impact.
Yes, it is. So do you have a motion to go on what I was talking about? Because I can repeat it. About the questionnaires not being a holdup on evaluating or delivering a decision? Do I have a motion? Do you second it? That's been a long week for me, too. Okay, we have a second? I did wrong. That we go ahead and proceed with our decision for the rezoning, and that the questions will be answered, posted? So, motion. You second it? You're not gonna second it? So everybody say, all right. All approved, raise your hand. Okay, so that's, now I can't say it. Four to one, all right. So as I am talking, I'd like to put a little caveat with the motion of having the property rezoned to light industrial, that it not be subdivided to circumvent the requirements by stormwater, state DEQ, that all the parcels will be required to have special use permit. Okay. So, and I don't know, Mr. Humphrey, if I can do that or not, I just throw it out there.
I'm not real sure we can. We will have to abide by the state law, even. I see what you mean, is a, a smaller lot may be.
Well, yeah, let me explain that.
Under an acre.
Yes, it, yeah, well, you have a lot that's under an acre, and it's also a percentage of that lot that is in purchase services. Then if it's under it, you don't have to abide by the stormwater requirements, you know, for stormwater. Yes. So what we really want to do is protect the property owners' societies, and.
Are you, are you trying to say that you don't, you're trying to add a stipulation to where the lots have to be larger than an acre?
No, no. But stipulation is, no matter what the size of the lot, they're gonna be required to meet the stormwater regulations. That's another way of saying it. Go ahead. Well, the conditional use is required by, you know, by the state stormwater department itself. And state stormwater has a long list of regulations. And part of that is, they basically said, if it's really small, we don't care about it. That's just a simple way of saying it. And I'm saying that this is thirty-eight acres, and we care about the entire thirty-eight acres. Breaking it up into smaller parcels, parcels would not alleviate you from doing the stormwater requirements. Am I making sense or I just? But I don't know, you know.
The site plan is going to determine what, what really you need to do. The size makes a whole lot of difference, the impetus amount of property asset, so there's a lot of conditions you have to. Site plan has to be approved by me first. So I'll make sure the site plan, like, must allow it to be to you.
But, but what he's saying is that he wants to make sure that somebody doesn't come in and get a little beauty section that doesn't make you have to do it through stormwater.
I don't think we can deny the petitioner the right to have acre lots, in my opinion.
Yeah. We're not, we're not trying to limit the size of lots.
But I think the, the size of the lot, the size of the lot has to be considered with the site plan for the whole lot, is what he's trying to say. You know, how would that lot be, be affected, the whole area, of just where it is, and those questions? So that's considered on the site plan. Usually with this type of, in my past experience, usually with this type of property and personal use permit, an engineer is required, you know, in that area. I just, I just don't do, I just don't go out and measure, measure properties really, I, I don't have the expertise that Doug has. So usually, if I can't do it myself, I require an engineer. So he cites all that, so it will be done correctly by our ordinance and by the state.
Another discussion on the board? Tracy, you wanna try and repeat what I said? Oh, okay. Mr. Humphrey may have a little bit of a good point about on the stormwater itself.
I mean, we would certainly look at, if you put an acre lot here, we would certainly look at what was around it, and if it affected even an acre, that's not required to have a detention bond. If it's, if the acre is covered in asphalt, well, it, it, it would make a difference, in my opinion, and how the water flows. I think that's all considered in the site plan. And if I need help, I hire, we, the family or the town hires us here.
If there's any questions? So what is the board's thought on a little caveat? Is this something valid, worthwhile to send to the board of the town council? Go ahead, John. Are we allowed to?
Explain what the caveat is, what?
Uh, caveat is that the...
Something in the motion itself?
Yes, yes, that the 38 acres as a whole will be subject to the stormwater ordinance by North Carolina State. I don't count it, sir.
Like I say, within the legal responsibilities, I think you can do that. For example, if you recommend it, don't recommend it, don't do anything. I think that'll still happen. But if you want to add that to the recommendation, you certainly can. Depending on the motion you make, to recommend, or not to recommend, or not do anything. Or you can recommend with, with what you think is important to the act, which you think the stormwater looking at the whole 38 acre is important, which is sort of add that. Now, your recommendation will go to the council, you know, all these questions will go to the council. So, they will have a complete, and we've had, we've had a council hearing, so, they will make the decision on whatever your recommendation is. But, like you said, it's a recommendation. Council will make the decision on whether the grant is rezoned or not, after the public hearing.
After the public hearing, yes. Springs a good point, there's another big meeting.
Yes, yes. And at that meeting, there will be, I'm sure three minutes will be delivered to that too, or five minutes, or whatever the council wants to hear from this audience, again. So, you've really had three meetings, a community meeting, this meeting, and there'll be a public hearing. All the adjacent property owners will be notified again of the public hearing, and what time it'll be in this room, in front of the council. You have an opportunity to address the council at that point, on four decisions.
So, there's no more discussion by the board. I'll try to help Teresa out and put my vote patterns together. It's those questions, so.
You may want, excuse me for your, you may want, put that recommendation to any recommendation that they have. In other words, what's your recommendation going to be to the council?
Oh, they can do basic recommendations?
Whatever it is, whatever it is, it will be included.
Okay.
Whatever recommendation you have will be included. Is that clear?
Uh, my best response.
Okay, let's say you have a vote of three to two.
Yes.
To recommend.
Recommend.
Then that, that caveat will be included in that.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
In that recommendation.
Right.
If you, if you say, "Order one against," it will still be included.
Okay. So, I'm going to make a motion that the 38 acres... I'm supposed to have that up. Parcel number 08222011M be rezoned to light industrial with a caveat that the entire site be subject to the stormwater ordinance by North Carolina State. Okay? So, proper protocol, I'll let anybody on the boards speak. I was going to ask if you want to talk about it first. Any questions, thoughts? I lost my mind. Okay, we have a second? All right. So all approved, raise your hand. So, the motion is approved to recommend this to the town council with the caveat.
With, with the vote, they will be...
With the vote, yes. Was what, was four to one? Four to one, yes. All right. So, with that, that takes care of that business. The next item of business is approved off the meeting minutes from November 21st. You guys are welcome to stay or go. Oh, I have, the board have a chance to do your three, three minutes? Yes, yes. Any comments, thoughts, questions? I did notice tonight, the first item with the little store, he's got some shelving stuff, he, he's working on it. Do I have a motion to approve itself, the meeting minutes? Do we have a second? All right, all in favor, say aye. Very good, guys. Very good. So, as with that, does anybody have any objections to adjourned the meeting? No. All right, with that, we adjourn. Hold on.
After the meeting, I would like to say, this has been a tough one. Y'all did a great job.